This is the Budget Work Session of the City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona, to be held April 25th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Let's have our Deputy Clerk take the role, please. Are you still Deputy Clerk? Have we changed your title? You, what do you now?
Um, Deputy Clerk.
Still Deputy Clerk? Okay. No pressure, Rudy. I was just curious.
We're working on it.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember DeWillis.
I am here.
Councilmember Duvernay.
Here.
Councilmember Carrick.
Present.
Councilmember Narin.
Here.
And Mary Linsky.
Here. Thank you. Okay, two items for discussion. Budget presentation of departmental accomplishments for fiscal year 2023 and goals for fiscal year 24. And then we're going to follow that with the presentation and discussion of the proposed budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kirsten Lennon, the Financial Services Director for the City of Cottonwood. And so I'm going to present the goals and accomplishments that were given to me by the various departments. A few years ago, we decided to make this a one-person show and not have all parade up all the department heads and take that time. And it seems to have worked out really well to have the goals and accomplishments presented by one person. It seems to be working pretty good. So we're just gonna jump right in because we have another presentation after this one. And if we can get through both of them tonight, then we don't have to have a meeting tomorrow. If we can't get through both of them tonight, we might have to have a meeting tomorrow. So we'll start with the council. And I'm not gonna read them word for word. I'm gonna kinda just give you a highlight of what's on there. I looked at last year's goals and basically you succeeded. You successfully allocated additional funding for infrastructure projects. So last year, we moved $4.8 million over to work on the Main Street project. So you were very successful in that. And then you also have started your strategic plan, and that should be finished and adopted by the end of fiscal year. And in this presentation, you will see the five main points of that strategic plan. So your goals for next year are to implement that new strategic plan through directing staff and to maintain those city reserves and continue fiscally responsible budgeting. We've been doing that. We've been doing a really good job. That's why we have those reserves, to be able to transfer them over to fund those infrastructure projects. You're also going to promote the city brand and vision of inspiring a vibrant community. Administration. In fiscal year 23, they accomplished contracting with Last Architect to start the design on the new city hall. You'll be getting a presentation on that city hall design within the next month, I think. And then we also sold a city property that was not needed by the city. And that's, you know, promoting our vibrant community. We sold the property on Second Street. And then you increased the reserves for future street projects. And they increased the reserves. And then the goals for '24 are to implement the strategic plan and do quarterly reporting and conduct community engagement meet and greet opportunities, introducing the new city manager, who's supposed to start in a couple weeks, and senior leadership presenting the strategic plan in the process. And then also create a citywide succession plan. And I did get those goals from Scotty. So the legal department assisted in the management of hiring a new city attorney, assisted in the negotiation of this C-MAR contract to construct the new city hall, and assisted in preparation of affordable housing guidelines. And then there's not very many goals because we don't have our new city attorney on board yet. She will be giving me those. I did send her a message and asked her to give me goals for next year. So she said she could get them for me by the time she comes onboard. City Clerk's office successfully held a primary and general election in '22, seating three council members. Held council and neighborhood meetings to open the dialogue between council and citizens and communicated with citizens by creating 50 council packet and agenda items. And then they also held a meet and greet for the new candidates. And then their goals for next year is to engage citizens by scheduling three council neighborhood meetings, schedule candidate information workshops for the 2024 council election, and continue the art display program in the council chambers, which is a really nice program. Actually, I'm buying one of the pieces of art that's in here. So the finance department. We completed our annual report, our 2022 annual report, and received the GFOA Outstanding Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we completed our budget for 2023 and received the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for both of those documents. We developed and implemented OpenGov, which is an online budgeting book. And this is our first year implementing that budget process, which is why we are a little late on getting you guys stuff for this meeting because it's new to us as well as departments and putting that budget information in. It will have an online transparency portal where, once the budget is up, the whole entire book will be online and you can scroll through it and drill down and see things. And it's gonna be a really beautiful page that you can just look through all the time. And it also allows for us to upload daily our transactions that happen in our software so people can look and see what we're spending money on. It's a great program. And I look forward to you seeing it when it's done.
Anytime. You have questions?
Anytime. Yes.
It's okay. I lost the thought.
Okay. Well, if you think of it later, you can always ask me questions. Then we streamlined the annual business registration process and by updating, simplifying the form. And then also worked on making sure that our certificate was easily mailable so we could get them out quicker. And then we adopted ordinance 731 for registering short-term rentals. And we'll be putting that into effect. And they will have to register like a business registration going forward. So our 24 goals are to develop business outreach programs to educate citizens on TPT tax, business registration, and other finance matters. Update our operations guide. We have an operations guide that we live and die by in the finance department, and it needs to be updated. So we'll make sure that gets done and adopted by council. And then to further develop the budget book, online transparency portal. And there is a budget survey section of OpenGov, and we're gonna work on getting that up and running so people can go and put their survey, answer survey questions. We can do all sorts of questions, any type of thing. So it'll be good for the city as a whole.
Will that, will we actively engage in that for getting, is that for getting community feedback?
Yep, it's for getting community feedback.
Great. Good.
How long have we had this OpenGov?
It's the first year. We just purchased it in September. And so we implemented and got everything up and running. And so this is our first year of having it. And then we will obviously continue to develop financial transparency and to develop our reserve program. Human resources. My pages are out of order. In '23, conducted two executive recruitments for city manager and city attorney. That went well since we now have a new city manager and a new city attorney. And then we implemented a referral bonus program to assist in employment, in our recruitment. We've been having issues and it seems to be working. We actually have had quite a few referrals in the last couple months that have been hired. So it's a good program. We facilitated a technical writing and presentation skills course for supervisors and managers. And most of the department directors participated in the writing and the presentation course. Goals for next year are to conduct and implement a new compensation study, which you know. That's in the process, and it will be implemented as of July 1st. Update at least one additional section of the employee manual and increase employee retention to a rate of at least ninety, ninety percent. It's a lofty goal.
What's our current rate of retention?
What's our current rate of retention?
Um, it's closer to eighty-two.
She said it's closer to eighty-two, in case the mic didn't pick it up.
How many sections are there in the employment manual?
There are currently like forty-four sections, something like that. But we are working on condensing some of that and reorganizing so we won't have that many sections anymore. We're going to combine things. So far, we have three new sections that we have on our website and are ready to go. And I don't, probably like a third of our old manual is crossed out right now. So that's where we're at.
That sounds a bit better than just one.
I know. Lots of sections will go into one. Information technology, IT. So in '23, they enhanced city efficiency by completing a move from an E1 enterprise system to license to a G1 government license. Only makes sense since we're a government. Instituted two-factor authentication for both MS Office 365 and MS Windows to enhance cybersecurity. Upgraded all the hardware relating to the ZTRON 911 radio system. That's a pretty big project. The ZTRON 911 system is a big project that they finished. And then their goals for '24 is to install sparklight fiber connections to and between all the city buildings. And they've got that approved this year to begin next year. And then implement new mobile data computers in all patrol vehicles, replace the physical servers, the release program, and then continue to replace 911 radio system with new equipment. Community development. In '23, they established a general plan steering committee. And that includes the Planning and Zoning Commission and citizens to get feedback on the general plan. They streamlined many zoning ordinances, as you know, since they came through council several times, doing all the different ordinances. Created a property beautification program that was just advertised. I've seen the information on Facebook and in the paper. And then they developed a property lien process for dilapidated properties. And their 24 goals are to achieve 100% electronic records from physical address files to make the move to the new city hall easier. They want to make sure they get the draft of the general plan completed and approved by P&amp;Z and council. And they want to begin the process for a I-code adoption, comparing code cycle and determining the cost benefit. And provide public outreach on all the different codes and ordinances. Code enforcement. Ensured required codes met for a structure to remain occupied safely by bonding deposit system for temporary certificates of occupancy. Applied and received a spay neuter grant to help residents with low-cost spay and neuter. Established a lien process for city abatements and funding to help with ordinance enforcement cases, allowing for cleanup and enhancement. And it's a small goal, one goal. Create a volunteer internship program for citizens to assist the ordinance enforcement division is their goal for next year. We'll talk more about code enforcement when we talk about the budget later. Economic development. In '23, we increased tourism marketing in major markets. As you probably saw, they did advertisements at the Phoenix Suns Stadium. They also advertised in Phoenix, Tucson, Texas, and the West Coast as part of their DMO or Destination Marketing Program. They established the brand, the city brand, that you are welcome here, and produced and distributed business surveys through the lens of economic development. They worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce on mixers and events and business resources. And then their goals for '24 are to launch the Business Retention and Expansion website with all the economic development graphics, analytics, and sales tax information that were one shop, one-stop shop for people to go look when you're thinking about starting a business. Have an active business task force developed through TED, which I should have asked her what TED stood for. Tourism and Economic Development. Launch economic development social media platforms to provide timely and engaging content for projects throughout Cottonwood and provide marketing and event support to city and wine community through social media, volunteerism, marketing. Housing and development. This was a new department last year with contracting for a housing manager with Sedona and then also putting aside funds for the housing assistance program. So she assisted local nonprofits, including Habitat for Humanity and the Homeless Coalition, and helped them with housing and grant programs. Assisted the Verdi Plaza Apartments by securing a loan from the City of Cottonwood and they applied for funds from the Arizona Department of Housing Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program with our saying that we would get, give them the loan. And they're going to add and renovate that complex on Verdi Plazas and add eighteen housing units. And then her goals for next year are to establish an affordable housing fund to assist in the increase of affordable housing and create a policy for development incentives to increase affordable housing developments. The court successfully transitioned into co-location with the Clarkdale Court. So Clarkdale Court and our court are now in one location. And our judge is their judge, and our administrator helps out with all their administration. They added a security officer, security by hiring and training a court security officer. And then they dealt with an ongoing transition from a traditional court to a one-on-one appearance process and virtual appearances. And their goals for '24 are to continue making appropriate upgrades and training for required virtual courtroom appearances, maintain excellent time to disposition and meet all of the AOC guidelines, and provide staff with training. Engineering and Public Works. Engineering's accomplishments for '23 is that they assisted in the construction of the first street sidewalk, developed and bid and assisted in the completion of pavement preservation projects, created a comprehensive capital improvement plan, prepared for economic growth and development by selecting an architect for the city hall design. They worked on awarding the Monte Tesoro sidewalk, Monte Tesoro sidewalk project, which will actually happen in next year's budget. It will not be completed until '24, but they have the design. Prioritized infrastructure projects by selecting a design firm to design Main Street pavement rehabilitation. And then their 24 goals are to design and bid 1,500 linear feet of sidewalk, design and bid eight lane miles of pavement preservation. This is, that will be the third year in a row that we have funded the $750,000 for pavement preservation, which usually is an every-other-year budget item. And they're gonna manage the completion and construction of the city hall improvements. And then they're gonna finish or start the construction for Main Street. Building and Parks Maintenance, their accomplishments for '23 were to train new personnel in the HVAC service for spring and fall checkups and create energy efficiency by converting 40 fixtures to LED energy-efficient bulbs. That is also one of their goals for next year. They're slowly going through all the bulbs and making sure they're energy efficient. They want to upgrade the Ball Field dugout infrastructure with roof replacements on all sixteen dugouts. And they want to assist in the design and construction of the new city hall to make sure that they can help maintain those facilities. The Police Department. Their accomplishments for '23 were a school safety officer program, providing assistance and resource to students, teachers, and administration in the elementary school. They purchased a Guardian tracking performance management and early intervention software to enhance employee notes and processes for early intervention. And they got a second traffic and canine officer. They implemented a successful police aid program, and it is successful. We've had, we're on our third one. The first one has been hired or is going to the academy to become a police officer. Continue, they want, their goals for fiscal year '24 is to continue to participate in the field force task force to strengthen response and civil, to civil unrest and partnership throughout the county. Initiate and implement school safety officer therapy dog program. And they want to update their body worn camera program in order to make operations, evidence retention, and redaction more efficient. The accomplishments for '23 for communications was that they worked with subscribers and city staff to evaluate the current agreements and solicit input for possible modifications. Those agreements will come up for, as they're, they are in their final stage of renewal this next year. And so the following year, there'll be a new agreement. They assessed their workload for effectiveness and efficiency, evaluate and evaluated and developed backup communication centers for a contingency plan and evaluated and developed standardized shift briefing reports to make sure that everyone knows what has happened and that they have subscriber agency transparency and consistency. And then for their 24 goals, they want to increase their radio infrastructure. Bless you. By installing another repeater site at Duncan Hill. And they want to implement shared service agreement with a radio technician for services from Central Arizona Fire and Medical Authority. And they want to be operational on Mutual Link, Arizona School Safety Emergency Alert Program. The Fire Department in '23 successfully completed 22 public safety and educational programs for the community, engaged community stakeholders on the National Firewise Program, ensured growth and security by completing and coordinating wildland fuels management of city properties, and promoted safety and wellness by completing community-wide COVID testing and vaccinations. In their 24 goals, they want to continue their wildland fuels mitigation program for city properties, complete the process and implementation of an agreement with the Verdi Valley Ambulance Company for support personnel, and continue their current fire prevention objectives of a whole community with public education programs. The REC Center's 23 accomplishments are they created and implemented new rates at the REC Center to generate more revenue from membership and remain fiscally responsible, improve the quality of citizen care by implementing wave technology to increase safety, and then completed numerous capital improvement projects in the REC Center to maintain this facility's health. Their goals for '24 are to continue to invest in the health and maintenance of the facility by redoing the pool plaster, which has been a request from several people, host quarterly themed events for after-hour usage of the REC, expand their marketing program to local businesses on their equipment. I don't know if you know, on the equipment at the REC Center, we have ads that roll through. And then provide targeted programming for seniors. Twenty-three accomplishments for Parks and Rec, the Pool and the Youth Center. They took steps to improve the quality of life by designing Phase Two of the Riverfront Park Trail with help of Public Works and Engineering. They assisted in branding and participation of events. The staff created an annual sponsorship packet, which helps in the promotion and funding of those events. Promoted economic development and transparency by achieving 100% cost recovery from Thunder Valley Rally. And their goals for '24 are to implement senior-focused programs, improve facilities with a possible addition of a splash pad, collaborate with the Verdi Valley Wine Fest to right-size the event and to create a sustainable and successful event. Transit or cat in the Verdi shuttle. Accomplishments for '23 is they increased citizen interaction and service by providing service to the town of Jerome three days, three times a day for one day. I had to figure out how to say that right. Developed specifications to order five transit buses and one van that is gonna be funded through 5339 money, grant funds. And then they partnered with Jerome, Clarkdale, and Yavapai County to provide transit services for the citizens of the Verdi Valley. And their goals for '24 are to improve service by adding five replacement transit buses, conduct a five-year transit plan highlighting areas of expansion and possible initiation of a micro-transit system, and develop staff by planning supervisor training programs through DOT and develop the scope of work for fair, for a fair collection, a new fair collection system and tracking program. Library. Their 23 accomplishments were to improve essential technical assistance to patrons by expanding their services and programming to allow one-on-one technical needs help. They expanded community connectivity by providing increased Wi-Fi hotspots with a laptop. They utilized their tools to do a digital media lab to assist the community in a video photo contest that celebrates the life in Cottonwood. And then they created an adult English as a second language class to assist citizen communication. And their goals for '24 are to provide social interactions for elderly and differently-abled community members, to partner with Audubon Society, and to provide positive outdoor activities for teens. The airport. Sorry, Jeff, I forgot to put your slide in there. Your original post didn't have the slide in there. The accomplishments for '23 were that they completed the airport master plan, secured a state grant for a one-inch pavement overlay of the airport runway, completed the design phase for taxiway A reconstruction, and received the A.DOT 2022 Airport of the Year Award. In '24, the goal is to implement the updated airport master plan, conduct studies for wildlife hazard assessments, air-filled stormwater drainage, and obstruction mitigation, and to continue and update the airport's noise abatement program to address community concerns. Streets Department and Construction. Their 23 accomplishments were they supported the city's roadway infrastructure by developing a detailed map for street sweeping, implemented environmental stewardship through storm management mitigation, and repaired, cleared, and maintained seven and a half miles of drainage systems and repaired and replaced 120 linear feet of culvert in the Village Unit Eight within the city limits. Maintained city infrastructure by applying 50,000 pounds, sounds like a lot, of crack seal and preparation for pavement maintenance preservation. And improved city's infrastructure by maintaining a biennial pavement preservation program and adding an additional year for next year for the '24. So in '24, their goals are to develop a detailed map of drainage system and identify drainage area, problem drainage areas, and start preventative maintenance. Complete a crack seal program. Improve the current infrastructure by beginning the rehabilitation of Main Street from 898 intersection to the end of Old Town. And after design review, upgrade the intersection of 10th and Main to maintain consistent and safe traffic flow. Utilities. Their accomplishments in '23 were to improve and, they improved and enhanced the accuracy and efficiency of collector- the accuracy and efficiency of collecting and entering monthly water use data by completing the replacement of more than seven hundred and forty-eight manual read meters to radio read meters. And they're not done, they still have more to do for, in the future, that's a future goal. Increased efficiency by completing valve exercising, increased citizen safety by installing a new arsenic unit at well eight, and upgraded water infrastructure by replacing well pumps at Verde Santa Fe, well eight and two, and well nine. And only Tom knows where those are located. And then their twenty-four goals are to enhance citizen safety and improve current infrastructure by, by replacing aging and deteriorating arsenic removal systems at wells one-one, one-two, and four-two. They want to finish the, replacing the manually read, read meters with new remote meters and, and install four antenna collector systems to enable the billing clerks to begin receiving meter reads in real time. And they want to continue providing all customers with reliable and safe drinking water and delivery service that meets or exceeds safe drinking water standards, and complete the construction and installation of the Highway two sixty well, including arsenic treatment, storage reservoir, and distribution lines that will help with redundancy for the Verde Village of water supply. Wastewater. Their twenty-three accomplishments are, were that they completed phase one of a feasibility assessment and initiated phase two of a direct potable reuse study, improved the wastewater infrastructure by complete, completing the engineering for lift station two and installation of piping underneath the Cottonwood ditch. They maintained water wastewater infrastructure by completing removal of vegetation and repairing, repairing the effluent pond liner. And they also completed the expansion study and final assessment of the blower and maintenance upgrades project for the Mingus wastewater treatment plant to improve the infrastructure and increase the life of the plant. And their twenty-four goals are to preserve resources by recharging three hundred acre-feet of reclaimed water annually, initiate the construction of the aeration system and plane, plant drain lift station and additional basins and clarifiers at the Mingus wastewater treatment plant, initiate and complete the construction of new lift station, and promote economic development by replacing a thousand feet of eight-inch collection piping with ten-inch collection piping along Main Street heading towards Clarkdale. So that will be in conjunction with the road. Not is that exciting presentation of goals and accomplishments. And I ran through.
Awesome. No, that's, that's great. It gives us a good overview. Thank you. Do you want to roll right into your next presentation? Okay. Before you do, I just, we have a couple of new council members that probably haven't, that haven't gone through this before, so I just want you to feel open to ask any questions at all. Kirsten's going to give kind of a brief overview of sort of the budgeting process as part of her presentation, but it can be a bit over, it can be a lot overwhelming. And there's often a lot of acronyms, so just feel free to interrupt at any time and make sure you understand fully what's, what's going on, okay?
So fiscal year twenty-four. So after all those accomplishments and our future goals, this kind of helps us implement our goals by having a budget. A budget is a plan that tells, tells us where we're going for the next year. Our budget process usually starts in October or November when we start planning and asking the different department heads what they think they're going to need as far as personnel, as far as capital, and those items for the next fiscal year. So we send out requests, they submit them back to us. Then we typically wait for council strategic plan update, whatever that is, usually December, January timeframe, because you do a new one every two years, but then in the off year, you do have like an update. So we make sure that that happens before we ask for goals for the next fiscal year because we want to make sure that we're always following the strategic plan. As part of our budget for that distinguished budget award that we get, the criteria is that our budget matches your strategic plan. And we have to show where we are following the strategic plan of city council. And that's part of the award. They point, you get points for making sure that you are matching this council's strategic plan. So then typically, in about March timeframe, finance staff, city manager get together with the department heads and we discuss their operational budget. So what do they need for their day-to-day jobs? We don't really discuss personnel at that time, we just kind of discuss what you're going to need for your day-to-day job. And we get that set into place. And then we usually bring the goals and accomplishments to council in April, but things were really hectic and busy this April, so it kind of got pushed off a little bit later into April. We usually do it at the work session. And then in May, we, after we present this budget in April, this is a proposed budget, this is just a plan, this is just our basic outline, we will bring you the tentative budget in June, which will be adopted, and that's the budget that sets our expenditure limitation and says, we cannot spend more than this dollar value for our next, next budget year.
So is it cali, it's not calendar years, June to June, correct?
It is July first to June thirtieth. Yeah, we're on a fiscal year. So we do the tentative budget in June, it gets adopted in June, and then we come back and adopt the final budget in July. And then we work on creating the budget book for the GFOA, and that usually gets submitted in October, and then guess what, we start all over again. So it's an ongoing cycle for budget for the finance department. Helen's a trooper, she like works really hard and gets all that stuff put in there. So this budget that we're going to talk about tonight is the proposed budget. It's just an idea, it's open for input, it's from the requests that we've received for the departmental budgets for capital and for personnel. And it's just to kind of give you an overview of what we think the revenues are going to be, where we think the expenditures are be, going to be, and where we're going to be. We will bring the actual tentative budget back with any changes that need to be made in June, and that's what gets adopted. So we're going to start with revenues. I always start with the happy part first, right? Money is a good thing when you're in finance. State shared revenues are, some of our highest revenues that we get for the general fund are the state share revenues, other than sales tax or TPT tax. As you can see in this graph, they're, they have been pretty consistently about the same from twenty nineteen to twenty-two. And then in twenty-three, the urban revenue share jumped quite a bit. And then in twenty-four, they're, they are telling us they're going to give us, allocate more to the cities and towns because in twenty-three, they implemented a flat tax. So part of that implementation, because urban revenue share is income tax, part of that is that they're giving us an extra two percent of those revenues for two years. And they basically said at the state level, save that money for future years to make up for the fact that we did this flat tax. The urban revenue share, the income tax, is from two years prior, so the money we're getting is from two years ago.
So what can we expect once the tax is flat?
It'll probably go down to the twenty-two numbers, I would assume. We'll be closer to there, about half of what we're currently getting. So state shared sales tax is obviously a portion of sales tax that is the share states' sales tax, and it's all based off of your population. They allocate those funds based on population. And then the MV Lou tax is part of your license tax, a portion goes to cities and towns, also based off your population. And then the HERF, which is Highway User Revenue Funds, which is, has to be spent on streets and streets projects, goes to the streets fund or the HERF fund to cover those streets and streets projects. And it's also based, they, all four of them are based off your population. Sales tax. This is the major revenue source for the general fund. As you can see in this graph, it has steadily increased. Part of that is that in twenty nineteen, we increased it by a half percentage, so there's a, a large jump there in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Well, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, it increases quite a bit. That half-cent sales tax, we did allocate a lot of that to go to different funds and into different reserves, streets projects, transit, sidewalks, those types of things. And so that has helped our reserves grow as well. So you can see that in twenty twenty-one, that was the COVID year, we had estimated that the sales tax would drop, so our budget, we had it drop, we lowered our expenses, but it actually grew by seventeen percent that year from the previous year. So that also helped us increase our reserves for future years because we had not budgeted to spend those funds. I am estimating that we will end this fiscal year up seven percent over last year, and that is actually what I budgeted, and it is coming in very close to that dollar value. So I'm positive that we will hit that seven percent. I only budgeted a three percent increase for next year, and that's because I'm hearing words about recession and downturn and all sorts of things, and I just want to be cautious and not over-budget and then have to turn around and cut people and cut things and projects. So you can see that it's, a three percent increase is about eight hundred thousand dollars. It's not that much money, but. So I just wanted to kind of give you a breakdown and show you where we were in sales tax. As you know, and I've told you before, retail and food for home consumption are our two highest sales tax categories. They make up almost seventy-five percent of the sales tax that we bring in. And you can see where we are at March. When you look at the budget numbers later, it's not, not all that is entered into our accounting software yet, so this is just a, just to show you where we are. As you can see, we're currently at six percent over last year's, same period last year, we are six percent over that currently. And typically, April, May, and June are higher months because the weather gets nice and people come up and start going out and doing things. So wastewater revenues. The wastewater revenues are about the same. We did not increase the rates last year, even though a few years ago, we had said that we had adopted a rate increase. We elected to not increase the rates just to help citizens, and we didn't feel it was necessary to cover the expenditures. And we are also suggesting to not increase the rates again this fiscal year and leave them where they are currently. Wastewater revenues. We are suggesting that we implement the wastewater rate increase as we talked about in the goals for next year, that there's a large project to update the Mingus plant, and they will need those revenues to help fund that project. And you can see it's steadily gone up because for the last four years, we have raised the rate.
So just, just for the other council members that may not know, we used to look at rates on an annual basis, kind of in a vacuum, and decide at that point if we're going to raise them or not. More often than not, council, I shouldn't say more often than not, but often council would not raise rates because you're facing a roomful of people that are upset about rate increases. So we took a different approach and did like a five-year study, and, and what those rates would need to be over that five-year study based on, you know, the, the, the cost of doing business essentially. And so we would implement a, a rate increase in one year that would span those five years. Just, just so you're aware, I think it's a cleaner way to do it, and it, it provides for more, provides for more forecasting, and I think it provides for more transparency too for the, the users of the service.
And so, and this is the last rate increase of that five-year proposal that was approved, so we probably will do a rate study next year to see where we need to be and bring forward maybe a rate increase that will span five years for the next.
What do you, what was the last rate increase?
This rate increase, it's, it's about a four dollar. They all have been about a four or five dollar a month increase for the last four years, so it's gone up about four or five dollars a month.
And do you find that obviously the public like a four or five dollar a month increase instead of twenty-five cent increase every year?
So.
Further.
I think they would prefer, probably prefer twenty-five cent increase every year. This was kind of a catch-up though, because they hadn't, we had not increased the rates for ten years, fifteen years before then.
Council, council member, Deverne, unfortunately, for many years, we went about a ten-year span with only charging sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. The general fund used to fund a big portion of wastewater facility through its sales tax. Finally, after ten years or so of not being able to raise it, we started going annually, increasing it, and eventually got to this, the, the five-year proposal. But it was, we, we're basically paying catch-up now for what happened, you know, about eight or so years ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm sure the rate study will not show a five dollar increase.
Just another note, Kirsten, I don't want, I'm sorry about interrupting. This year, we're proposing that we're going to go ahead and do another rate, uh, a study. We've done them in-house for the last ten years or so. We're, we're going to go and have a consultant actually review everything that's been done in the past and possibly give us some options on how to go ahead and charge this. As you can see, we charge every single household the exact same amount, and that was established years ago when we didn't own the water companies. We've owned the companies for well over a decade now. Now we can go back and possibly look, look at some sort of rate that will be based on water usage rather than just a staple account for everybody. That would probably go down for some people and probably go up for others that are high
So our refer, reserves and fund balance, and, so I get, you get the, you get the nice picture on my picture, it's like Greek. I can't read what it says. I printed it out before I fixed it. So our fund balance or our reserves have steadily grown since we increased the tax to the half-cent sales tax in twenty nineteen with the direction of increase the reserves, build up this reserve. So you can see that in twenty nineteen, our total was seven and a half million in reserves for all funds, and I forgot to put what funds there are on there, sorry about that. And we're currently, for twenty-three, our estimate is that for all funds, it'll be thirty million. So that's quite an, an increase over the last five years. It is going down for twenty-four because some of those reserves are for the street project that we are planning on doing. And then we will also be using quite a bit of the wastewater reserves and of the water reserves to do larger projects. So we will continue to work on making sure that we build these reserves, that, you know, that is a council directive, and that is also my goal. I'm very conservative, I like it when the reserves are at thirty million, that's how, I'm, I feel a little more comfortable that way. So if you look at the next slide, the reserves and inter-fund transfers, so we budget reserves as an expense, and I know that seems really funny, but it means that we can't expend it anywhere else. So when we look at the budget document, you'll see in council's budget, these large numbers, it makes council's budget look like you're spending a lot of money, but really, it's a reserve. And you budget it as an expense. And so in twenty-three, we budgeted that there would be eighteen million dollars in reserve, and a large portion of that is that budget reserve that we started to designate at twenty-five percent of the previous year's revenue. GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association recommends sixteen point six-six percent, which is supposed to be sixty-day coverage of your previous year's revenues. So we decided two years ago to, to up that and do a twenty-five percent reserve. And so this will be the third year that we're funding it at twenty-five percent. So next year's reserve for that is seven point six million. So next year's reserve for that is 7.6 million. The accumulation fund, that was established years ago before I got here.
Mayor Council, the, that accumulation fund used to be a, uh, it was a 2% that we were collecting many years ago. It has, it, when we got to the $1 million during the down economy during the, uh, Great Recession. Council decided to go ahead and just keep it at 2%. So any interest it earns goes back into the general fund and we just keep the, the $1 million in the bank account. And that is cash available.
Then there's the general fund reserve and that's, um, this usually gets transferred out to the streets department for doing sidewalks. As part of the half-cent sales tax increase, it was allocated for pension funding. But since we bonded to pay off the unfunded liability of the pension, we are now allocating it towards sidewalks instead. And then the undesignated reserve is just what it says. It's not really designated for anything. That's basically council's reserve to spend on what is needed. If you have a large project or something else that happens during the year, we can pull those funds from there. Or we can just leave it and carry it over from year to year. There's also a CIP fund that we started last year. We're going to start putting away money every year to help with those large projects, like the fire truck that we bought last year that will actually maybe get this year and finish paying for this year. It's almost two years in the making of getting a new ladder truck that costs one and a half million dollars. But if you have this reserve, then you don't have to wait so long before you can afford to purchase that. We had been, they had been asking us for, as long as I've been helping with the budget, which is, I've been here for 22, worked for the city for 22 years. So probably 20 years they've been asking for a ladder truck.
Yeah, we've gone through three fire chiefs. This is our third one, he finally gets it.
And we finally could, could fund it, so we did last year, last year, and hopefully we'll get it this year. So that CIP fund is basically there to build up, to allow us to have the funds to be able to purchase those large items that we normally wouldn't throw into the budget because of funding. We also have set aside $650,000 for the comp study to fund whatever that tells us we need to do. That's just an estimate, I just put a number in. I think last time we did 700,000. I will tell you that that's a guess. So I do not know how much the salary plan is going to cost or what the implementation or exactly when that will be done. They're working on it currently. And then, um, the housing, affordable housing fund. The housing department and Shannon Boone asked me if we could set aside a reserve to help with projects, to help with low-income housing. When a developer comes in, sometimes you need to be able to say, okay, we'll, we'll help you out if you give this many units that are low-income. Or, and so she asked me to put that in, she asked the mayor, she's asked Rudy. So we, we put that in the budget for this next year. Okay, so the interesting slide. So you see, we'll see the budget numbers later and it's $182 million. And it seems like, oh my gosh, that is crazy ridiculous. But we budget for any possible thing that might happen. If we think we're going to get a grant, it's in the budget, the revenue and the expense. If we think we're going to need to bond for a city hall, it's in the budget, revenue and expense. So this $182 million in all likelihood will not be spent in the next budget year. Because those are bonding and lease proceeds, transfers in, indirect cost, grant revenues, grant expenses, and then transfers out. So the general fund has to fund, and I skipped that part on the last slide, has to fund some of the smaller special revenue funds if they don't have enough to cover. They don't bring in enough revenue of their own to cover their expenditures. The library is probably our, our number one that we always fund. The county gives us about $150,000 a year to help fund the library. The rest is covered by the general fund. So next year, it's 1.2 million. The county actually did just tell us that they're going to lower their contribution to us next year. So it's gone up a little bit.
Give, give us a sense though of what our actual expenses are, kind of year-over-year, what the trend or the average is.
For the library?
No, 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 I'm sorry, for the whole, for the, for the whole entire organization.
Yeah, um, the whole entire organization, in '22, our expenditures were like 52 million. So it was, our budget was 139 million. So it was, we only spent not even half of what we budgeted. Because we just make sure that we have the budget authority. That's why we budget that high. Because if you don't have the budget authority, you can't spend the money. Even if you got it, if you got a grant in the middle of the year and you didn't have the budget authority, let's say you got a grant for a million dollars, you didn't have the budget authority, you couldn't spend it, you'd have to wait. We actually ran into that with the SAFER grant when I first started here.
Uh, Mayor Council, we did that, uh, you may recall, uh, uh, mayor, uh, a few years ago.
Twenty 12, I think it was.
Something like that. We went after a Fire Act grant to double the size of our fire department. We had just gone through budget revision, we had just lowered our revised amount for the, that current fiscal year. And we were not able to, um, come up with the money to, uh, fund, actually come up with the matching funds for a Fire Act grant. We actually had to go out the next year, we were fortunate enough to get it and we were able to do it. So we were real careful about not under-budgeting. Without a budget authority, we can't do anything.
So some of the other funds that require transfers are the cemetery. Obviously, there's not a whole lot of money coming into the cemetery. All those plots were sold years ago. It's just maintaining that cemetery. The airport often has to have fund, uh, inter-fund transfer. And it's so large for '24 because there's a lot of grants that we're trying to get to do airport improvements. And there's always a matching on those grants. And the airport does not bring in enough revenue always to cover that, that matching. So the, the general fund makes sure that we cover that. The streets department, you can see in '22, we moved up 4.8 million to help cover that street project. We will have to move an additional two and a half million in next year's budget because in the budget is nine and a half million, somewhere around there, to do this main street project from, um, and the, and whatever happens at the 10th Street intersection. And then the transit fund, it, it all depends on how much matching we have to do for the transit fund if they have big capital items. There are some items budgeted. It doesn't mean that they will purchase those items if they don't get the grant approval. That's the thing about the grant funds is if we don't get that grant, we don't spend that money. So this kind of shows you on this estimated to actual, that the actual estimated revenues are about 58 million and the expenses are about 71. And it's 71 because we plan on spending a lot of the reserves on large projects next year. That doesn't mean that those projects will actually be completed and paid for next year. We're just planning on it. So now we get into some of the nitty-gritty of the budget and that's employees and benefits. So currently, in this current budget year, we have 230.8 employees. And that .8 is the judge. She's special, she gets to stand out every time. And we had, um, and you can see that, that this is the personnel cost from, it's actually from the new software, which is really quite nice that I can just pull it out of there. It shows you just the increases year-over-year. You can see that the, um, actual for '21 is super high. That's the $20 million we bonded to pay off the unfunded liability for public safety retirement. That's why that one is so high. You had to book it as an expense to the pension fund. So you can see that '22, '23, and '24 all have slight increases. In '23, we added 11 positions, 10 positions. And then in the current budget, I have budgeted to add eight new positions of the 17 that were requested. And we'll get to that in a minute. We also have in the current budget, a comp study implementation and a minimum of a 4% cost of living adjustment to employees up to the maximum of their range. And then a merit program of 4% based on their evaluations. We have all of the previously budgeted certification pay programs, which we have one for water. We have a paramedic cert pay program. I think that's it. And then we have this shift differential pay program that you all approved this year. That got implemented and is getting paid currently. We also in the budget is a tuition reimbursement program. We put $20,000 aside to help with tuition reimbursement. Employees can ask for up to $2,000 in the fiscal year. And it's, it's available until the $20,000 is gone for that year. And we have not spent all the money last year, which was the first year we implemented the program. We haven't, I don't think we'll spend on the money in this fiscal year either. But people are using it, which is good to see. We also talked earlier about the employee referral pay program. And then, um, last year, we implemented that all the directors got a car allowance instead of asking for mileage reimbursement so that they could use their cars instead of having to have city-owned units. So this is the listing of all the requests for personnel and reclassifications that were submitted by staff. And I know it's tiny, it's hard to put a lot of info on a really small slide. They do submit justifications with their requests. And I thought I printed them out and brought them with me. But 17 positions were asked for and then, um, looks like 10, 11 reclassifications of positions. And that total for that cost would be like 1.1 million added to the budget with benefits, salary and benefits. What is currently in the budget is eight new positions. And one of them is only at a quarter of the year. Basically, we currently contract with Sedona for the housing manager. And she, her contract will go through the end of the fiscal year of '24. And so I put in the budget that we would have them for the last quarter so they could train, so they could kind of communicate before she left, or we could contract with her again or whatever. But I wanted to make sure that if we were hiring somebody as a housing manager, they had time to get to know what was going on before the contracted housing manager left. We are budgeting an, an additional animal control officer. And there is a long story behind that. We currently have two ordinance enforcement slash animal control officers. Two people doing that job, both jobs, animal control and ordinance enforcement. They used to just be animal control years ago and then they switched over to planning and became both. And it's just too much work doing both jobs and too hard to keep that going for both departments. So we're moving currently, the plan is, to move one of them back over to police department as an animal control officer and give them one more so that they have two animal control officers so that they can have seven-day-a-week coverage. And then at the other ordinance enforcement slash animal control officer will stay with planning and zoning and just be an ordinance enforcement officer. The airport field maintenance and operations specialist. Currently, we have someone that we have been contracting with that's been helping out at the airport to do maintenance and be there to help the pilots with the fuel and to take the fuel loads. And so this is just switching from that contract to having that be actually an employee. And then we can have them work a little more on doing more ground maintenance as well. And so that, is why that one's in there. The public works projects and CIP manager, uh, that is a need. We have a lot of big projects going on, a lot of big CIP projects and buildings and development. And we need someone who's managing those. And it really was, came to light with this new city hall. When we're asking someone to be that project manager, then that's not his job currently. So it's really a, a need to help with those projects. Maintenance, we're just adding another public maintenance work, tech worker. Fire and medical, we're adding one, an additional fire inspector. They have one, we're adding a second. And then we are also adding another captain. They want to do somewhat of a reorganization. And having another captain position will be part of that reorganization. As you can see later in the reclassifications, we're also reclassifying two of them to be more of a manager level. Um, and then utilities is looking for an instrument tech and an electrician. And they will deal with the, and I'm not going to say it right because I never do, SCADA, SCADA?
SCADA?
System and help with that. And it's a really important piece of the utilities for monitoring the water and wastewater. The reclassifications, we often approve the reclassifications because they're not a lot of money. And it is a need for those departments to have those employees reclassified. And the total for all that comes down from the 1.1 million in request to 792,000.
Will we, uh, on the reclassifications, will we wait for this comp study to be done to inform?
Yes.
Whether or not it's justified?
Yeah. I mean, we will probably do the reclassification, but their job, their salary might, may or may not change from the comp study. That reclassification will change their range because it's all based on job classification and range.
But I guess my question is, will the compensation study inform that? Or you're going to implement, or is your plan to implement the reclassifications prior to the compensation study?
The plan is to implement the reclassifications on July 1st with the comp study. So some of it, we think some of it will be very similar, like the communication specialists. We think that that's what it's going to come back and tell us is that we need to be reclassifying those. So it could change more with the comp study. I mean, I don't know, I haven't, I don't know where the comp study is in the, in the process.
When you reclassify the current range requested range, so just say you go from 18 to 20, 16 to 18, what determines it? So I see the, the 10 inch just goes up one classification where you have other things going up too.
Um, it's based on the job description and how the job description changes and then the, in the request of the director that's asking. So we get job descriptions that, and they change the job description and they submit that. And then we look at the range and decide how that range should change.
On the, um, proposed full-time, do you know why PD pulled the three officers?
I pulled the three officers because they're not asking for officers. They're actually asking for overfill positions. So what they're asking for is if they know someone is leaving. Like let's say I turn in my retirement and I'm going to retire from the police department in six months. And you know, and you know, they want to be able to fill, go in and backfill that position for that person to be there now because sometimes it takes six months to get them trained and get them on board. And we just basically told them, if you absolutely know someone's leaving, we are willing to fund you backfilling that position. We don't have to allocate the funds in the budget. And, and put three spots in there that, that uses budget dollars that you may not use.
Gotcha. Can you get the grant writer on that?
I, I do know... I know.
Mayor Council, we current, we, as, as I mentioned at a previous meeting, uh, we have currently a position called the management analyst that didn't work out for us the last time. We just hired one on, it didn't last very long. That's one of the positions that we have left open for the city manager to go ahead and evaluate and see what they, um, what he would like to do with it. And that, if he's already knows about the, the need for a, a request for a grant writer. He said he'd go ahead and look at that position and see if there was some way we could shoehorn it into, change it from, not necessarily just from a management special, analyst, but see what he could do about adding in the grant writer requirements to that position.
And that position?
So if we don't fill whatever given position, we can change the titles or job descriptions? It could be a dual also.
No, at this time, it hasn't been changed. It's still a management analyst. We didn't want to fill it until we actually had the city manager onboard. So that he could decide what he wanted to do with that position. And like I said, he's already heard the council would like to have a grant writer. So that may be an option for us.
And and we in in HR and finance, um, you can change a title.
Okay.
Internally, as long as you don't change the range and the pay. Because anytime we change the range and the pay, we have to bring it back to you and request that. Because when you but when you approve the budget, you approve this number of full-time people at this dollar value. So anytime we change a range on a position, we have to ask for council's approval.
So long as it's a whatever.
Just a title change, yes.
With the proposed new full-time positions, do you have, you do you have the data that supports that? We can overlay of where it, like where in time that we, this is what we're requiring?
So basically, the positions are requested by the department and they submit a brief. This is why we think we, you know, why we need this additional position. And um, I can forward that information to you. I don't have it like right here with me, but I can send you what they requested so that you can see why. Um, and then we like, we can always change this. So if after this meeting you go and you review it and I send you that information and you say you don't want to, then I can bring it back to you and we can remove any positions that we don't feel need to be there. This is just a proposed. Yeah, and I will give you the, and I'll send you guys the data behind it, their requests, whatever they requested.
And if you requested eight positions, if you were to choose, what were the top three positions you would like?
Um, the projects and CIP manager is pretty important. I think that that's a priority. It's not fair to ask me. Um, I would probably say the public works maintenance tech and the fire inspector too. Those are the three that I would choose as a priority.
I think, you know, once our new manager comes on board.
Yes.
He'll definitely want to evaluate all this, look at the data behind it, assess the needs as obviously as quickly as he can. So a a lot of these we can consider too as a, as a, really as a placeholder until he's able to make that determination.
And we, and I did have it, we had a meeting and discussed this with him as well. So he is aware of what is in here. So when he comes, we can talk about it more. And if if he feels that we need to not fund some of these positions, we can totally change it before the tentative budget.
I would agree on the the project manager especially is certainly a high priority of mine to make sure that we have that position with all the projects we have coming up. In public works, I know they need a lot of help over there. And um, you know, our housing coordinator position too is really important. It ties right into our strategic plan.
Just just a reminder, I know Kirsten already started, uh, mentioned this before, but this is a proposed budget. They'll still, there, we can still make plenty of changes before we come to tentative. And even then, provided we don't break the the expenditure limitation, we can still make uh changes up until July when we actually adopt the final. So we've got three, three more op, or at least two more opportunities to make some changes to this. And uh, our city manager will be on board by then, so.
I'll just try and give as much information.
Oh, certainly, no, no worries. And again, anytime you need to to talk about any of the items on here that's to discuss, please just contact Kirsten and she'll go ahead and get you the information you need.
I put stars behind the three that you guys.
Can I ask one last question?
Yep.
Because I don't understand the benefits.
Okay.
So just say you look at any of the positions, right? And you'll say that estimated salary, the the minimum, the max, minimum, mid-max, then the estimated salary percentage. With the benefits, like if, how much of the salary is the benefits?
Our benefits usually run about forty-five percent of whatever the salary is.
I mean, if you get, um, like if you change your job like from sixteen to the seventeen, you're you've already got your benefits, right?
But it's going to increase by whatever that salary increase is as well, so.
What does that entail or is that two?
So it's Arizona State Retirement or Public Safety Retirement, depending on which one you're in. And then there's Social Security and Medicare that the city covers. There's health insurance that the city covers. We also have a life insurance policy, so all those things.
Factor in.
Yeah, lots of things that get factored into that.
Employees are a number one expense.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, because some of the reclassifications, it's cost a over twenty-five percent increase.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, we're service, service industry, so our employees are our biggest expense, our biggest asset too.
We like to think so.
I, no, and I believe me, I was.
Twenty-five, you look at the figures, I'm not looking at the wages, but percentage wise.
Yep.
I mean, twenty-five plus twelve point five percent increase.
Yeah, no, I hear you. And having been self-employed for, since I got out of high school, I've always struggled with this part of the budget.
Yeah, that's probably where I'm coming from, so I didn't understand that.
So we'll, we'll talk about some of those benefits now. Um, Arizona State Retirement is currently going up next year to twelve point two nine percent. Um, all of our full-time staff that are not police officers are firefighters are in Arizona State Retirement. Um, as you can see on the bottom chart, it has, it's kind of steadily increased over the years. Part of that is due to new more employees. Um, and then obviously, the rate is twelve point three percent. Um, when I started, it was like four. Uh, Public Safety Retirement, since we funded the bonding and paid off the unfunded liability, you can see we are currently with both plans, fire and police. They are separate plans. They have separate rates because they're separate plans. With the two combined, we are a hundred and two percent funded. So we're doing good. We won't have any huge increases in the rates that we have to contribute moving forward. That's a good thing. We always want it to be at least a hundred percent funded.
Just remind me again, how much when we bonded, how much estimated savings was there, six, six million?
It was like nine million over the life of the bond.
That's great.
Um, as you can see in the the contributions that we've made for twenty nineteen, twenty, it was like one point six million at that time in contributions. And that's just the matching, that's our half. Um, and then in twenty, twenty, twenty and twenty-one, that's when we paid it off. So that's that big chunk of money that we paid off the the unfunded liability. And then now you can see in twenty-one and twenty-two, moving forward, our contributions are only about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The rates are pretty consistent over the last two years. Um, they are going up a little, like a percentage point, which is still within, very close to what we're paying for Arizona State Retirement as well. And there are three plans. Public Safety Retirement is very complicated. They have three different tiers with different rates. Um, the first tier is people who were on it before they made changes. And then in two thousand and seventeen, they made changes and they changed, added a new tier. And then again, in twenty, whatever it was, they added another tier and made more changes. So they've, they've made it a little complicated. But you can see that the employer portions in twenty and twenty-one, for the police department, in twenty-one, our contribution matching was fifty-eight point three nine percent of their salary. So basically, whatever they were getting paid, we were paying almost sixty percent into the retirement fund. Now it's down to ten point seven five percent. So by funding that unfunded liability, we've reduced those percentages by forty percent. So our health insurance plan, um, we got our rates this year and we, they increased the rates by about six to nine percent, depending on which plan you were on. And we can, are going to continue to fund the program as we have in the past, which is we fully cover the employee. And then we do percentages for child, family and spouse. We do not cover the vision insurance that is solely on the employee. Uh, the estimated cost for twenty twenty-four for health insurance for the employees and our portion of the dependent coverage is approximately three million dollars. So operations and capital. So this is our capital layout by fund. Um, you do have a detailed listing of all the capital that's in the packet. You would not have been able to see that up here on this screen, so I just kind of summarized it down to show you what each of the funds, what percentage it was of that amount. And I have a little star next to the general fund because it looks really large. Um, three and a half million of that is for our Enterprise Fleet Program. A few years ago, we contracted with Enterprise Fleet Management, yes, the people that rent cars. Um, and we lease vehicles from them. And then it, at the end of the five-year lease, they sell those vehicles for us. And then that money goes back into paying for the new vehicles we get. They get a lot more money for the vehicles than we ever get. When we auction off vehicles ourselves, we get very little money for those vehicles. They get pretty much market value. So this three and a half million that's budgeted for next year is mostly the police department's vehicles. They got new vehicles five years ago and that's hitting the end of the lease. So we're going to sell them all and get new vehicles. And the way that the, that it works for accounting and budget is I have to budget the expense for the full cost of the vehicle, even though we're not really paying for it in that year. And I have to budget a revenue. So they wash. And then you, you actually expense it as the life of the lease for five years. It seems weird, it's an accounting thing. Um, the other large items are obviously the streets fund and that's all the streets projects mainly. That is the main street project. There is nine million in the budget for, almost nine and a half million in the budget for the beginning of that project. And there's some other smaller projects in there as well. Um, and then transit, there's money budgeted for buses. Then you have the grants fund. That's a large item because that's all those airport grants that we are trying to get. Those are all, almost all federally and state funded grants. Um, the matching base is based on whether it's federal or state. And then the capital improvements fund at thirty-one million. There is a expense budgeted in here for the new city hall. I don't really know how much city hall is going to cost, so I budgeted a thirty million dollar expense and a thirty million dollar revenue because then at least we have the budget authority to cover whatever we need to do for that. Thanks, Tom. And then water and wastewater have some very large projects as well, including the Mingus Treatment Plant. And finally, two sixty water line. So I did list out a couple items that are just some bigger things on this slide that show you, you know, what is in the general fund, what is in the water and wastewater fund. I kind of just went over most of them. You can see that, you know, also in wastewater, some water wastewater line upgrades. Um, rehabilitating lift station three. Um, for the grants, you got a pavement preservation program and the taxiway rehab. And then for the general fund, obviously, the three million for the PD's vehicles. There's also some other small, um, some other trucks and other vehicles that we're getting for other departments as part of that enterprise lease program. And then I have budgeted money for designing the riverfront park green space. That's the space next to the garden that is currently a dirt field. So that would be to design that and hopefully fund some type of project on that in the next budget year. So this is just an overview by fund of the total budget for each department, revenue and expenditure. We always budget our, our budget is always a zero balance budget for the coming year. So we have revenues to cover all expenses. Um, that's how we budget. And why the general fund budget is so large is because of reserves and bought and the other, some of the other funds that are super large are bonding or large projects. But like I said earlier, we don't ever spend that full budgeted amount. We just want to make sure we have enough funds to cover whatever we need to do during the year. So this is just the general fund. Um, the general fund is currently sixty-two million. Um, and as you can see, the estimate for the general fund for this year for expenses is only twenty-nine. We're going to end the year at twenty-nine million. So that sixty-two million is super high due to all those budgeting, all those expenditures that we think might happen along with the reserves. So council's budget is twenty-two million because of those reserves that we talked about earlier. I think really it's only like three hundred thousand that you guys really spend in a year.
In years past, we, our reserves have been around that amount, right? I mean, a long time ago.
Yeah, they were around, in years past, our reserves were like thirty million or more.
I'm sorry, I was thinking council, council's contingency.
No, yeah. So um, this is from the new budgeting software. I just wanted to show you what it looks like when it comes out of there because it excites me. I know budget doesn't excite anyone but me and Helen. Everybody else is like, okay, enough. It's really nice that it can just give me a nice little chart and some graphs and tell me what's going on and I can pull it out and print it and show it to you. So this is the special revenue funds. Um, they're called special revenue funds because they make their own revenues. They don't always fund themselves completely. Um, you have the cemetery fund, airport and the library. And this just kind of shows you the last three years, shows you the twenty-two actuals. So that's what we spent in twenty-two on all the special revenue funds. And then the department head estimate for the end of this year and then the budget request for next year. And the same is with the highway user, with our new funds and the street projects. That's so large because of those large projects that we're planning. I just like it because it comes out of the system and I don't have to do anything. So um, capital improvement fund, debt service funds, and then we have misspelling there on my part, fiduciary funds. Um, so we do have two small funds, the volunteer fire pension fund and the employee benefit fund. Um, the employee benefit fund is is leftover from when we were self-insured. And those revenues, there's actually just a small amount of money that is reserved that we can use for, and has to be used for all employee benefits. So if we have any programs that help all of the employees, like we just, we're currently doing a steps challenge, those types of things, then we can use those funds for those projects. Um, the debt service fund, as you can see, it's not, it's pretty stable. Um, I didn't do a slide on our debt. I didn't have time. I'll make sure that that's in for the tentative budget. Our riverfront, the the recreation center bond is paid off in twenty twenty-seven. So that is about one and a half million, one point one million a year for our debt service payment. So that'll go away in twenty twenty-seven. And then the capital improvements fund is where the new city hall expense and bonding is budgeted. And then this just shows you the enterprise funds. Their actual expenditures for twenty-two were eight point eight million. And then we, our estimate for this year includes reserves, carryover funds, and that's forty-four million. And then for twenty-four, it's fifty-six million, and that's because of those large projects. And I'm done.
All right. Questions, council?
I already asked him.
You could ask a hundred more if you have more in you.
It's always easier to ask questions in the moment, I think.
Counsel, are we generally comfortable with moving forward as she's proposed this budget? With the reclassifications, the the new hires, new full-time employees?
I'd like to see some of the data that supports it.
Okay.
And I'll make sure you get that.
Okay, you'll send that out, okay. So then talk to us about next steps.
So uh, next, we will work on preparing um, the tentative budget and bring that back to you. Um, we do do some uh, citizen outreach between now and June. Um, I'll simplify this budget down to this presentation down a lot and make it pretty simple. And um, just so that they have some information and we'll go around, we've started scheduling meetings with community groups and the chain. And we'll go around, we've started scheduling meetings with community groups and the chamber and we'll go present what's going to happen so that at least the citizens are aware. Since there's none here tonight. And then they can view this. And then we'll bring back the tentative budget to be adopted in June.
So in June, we'll approve the tentative, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if we have any concerns about some of the, you know, new personnel to be hired, do you want us just to get back to you individually or through the manager?
Um, probably through the new city manager. It's probably the best direction. Um, you can talk with, have a discussion with him and then he can direct me on what you decide.
Okay, but our next opportunity, unless we schedule something else to discuss it as a council, would be in June?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor and council, the, the, in the June meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Kirsten, you'll, she'll bring a comparison between the current proposed and the, the tentative with all the different changes that have been done. Uh, and of course, we'll have the, the new city manager go through it also and make some suggestions as to what should it should remain or, or any changes that need to be done. Of course, he'll take the lead from council.
Okay. Okay.
And once he sees everything, if he has discussion with him ever, we can also call a special meeting.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, and, and if.
There's a lot here that he's going to have to, I mean, I know he's looking at it now.
Yeah.
But the data's got to be huge to support all of this.
And we do have in our calendar, there are no dates. It says to be determined. We could bring back another proposed budget.
Sure.
If, if that is the direction that you would like us to go, um, once he's gotten here and we've discussed and you've talked to him and we have different, if we have different numbers that we, you want to see.
Yeah, I, I think, I would like for Mr. Douglas to get here and then we can, you know, he'll, I told him he has a week to get kind of caught up and understand everything. So after that week, then we can, uh. Two weeks? You're so generous. But yeah, no, I think maybe, you know, if, if we have a lot of concerns, then we can have another meeting if, if needed, or we can just address our concerns to Mr. Douglas and he can work with you all on getting it tweaked for presentation to us. But, um, this is, you know, hands down the most important thing that our, that this council does. It's informed by our strategic plan. So, and I can see definitely that you've obviously incorporated that into how we're spending our money here. But, um, yeah, at any point, if we want to have another meeting, that's our prerogative.
Yes, definitely.
Yep.
And we could always, um, the tentative budget is scheduled to come back on the sixth and we could always move that out to the second meeting and do a presentation on the sixth about a proposed as well. And move the tentative to the end of the month.
Got it.
We just have to adopt a tentative by the third week in July.
Okay, that's our deadline.
That's what the state says.
The drop dead deadline, okay. All right, well, great work. I don't think there's any real concerns here from council, so I think, uh, yeah, go forward.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, so I will, uh, adjourn the meeting. Second, okay. If mayor made the motion, council member who will second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
So to be clear, there's no meeting tomorrow?
Okay.